Call to order the August 19th, 2025 meeting of the High Point Regional High School Board of Education. Please stand for a flag, suit.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open Public Meetings Act statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meeting law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of it to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Augusta, Branchville, and Sussex post offices, and notice sent to the New Jersey Herald, the Sunday Herald, and the Clerk of the boroughs Branchville and Sussex and the townships of Frankfurt, Lafayette, and Wantage. Our mission statement, High Point Regional High School in partnership with staff, family, and community is dedicated to the quest for individual excellence. By fostering high standards of achievement, we prepare students to become responsible and productive members of a diverse society. Mr. Dunn? Here. Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Ms. Gall?
Here.
Ms. Longenberger? Ms. Orsi? Ms...I apologize. Pelusek?
Here.
Ms. Schuman?
Here.
Mr. Vanstone?
Here.
Ms. Weiss? Dr. Ripley?
Here.
We have a forum. Excellent. Okay, a motion will now be made that the High Point Regional High School Board of Education enter executive session to provide an update on legal, personnel, and negotiations items which are exempt from public participation pursuant to New Jersey Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, Open Public Meetings Act. Any discussions held by the Board which need not remain confidential will be made public when appropriate. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. The Board will reconvene in public session in person and virtually at the conclusion of the executive session. It is not anticipated that any action will be taken. So I'll make that motion to enter executive session. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
May I have any motions to return to public session?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
By Mr. Van Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are back in public session. So first up is approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes for June 24th, 2025, and executive session minutes of June 24th, 2025. I will make that motion to accept those. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Team none. Can I ask for a roll call, please?
Okay. Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Sorry. Ms. Dahl?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Powellson?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne?
Yes. Public comments. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, we will open the public comments for agenda items only at this time. Each speaker should state his or her name and address. You will have three minutes to address the board, which will be timed by yourself. We will limit this section to no longer than 45 minutes. Please be respectful and mindful, your comments are being recorded. And we have both our lectern here and our online portal email, nothing. Seeing no one at the public comments. Can I have a motion to close? Okay. Mr. Van Stone, and a second?
Second.
Yes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, presentations. First up, we have HPEY president Liz Bass Sunda to open us on the HPEY Act.
Hello. Hey, I say good evening. Happy August. We are, I'm excited about a new start to the year. The staff is anxious, to say the least, hopefully for their credential check. It's going to be here, excited to start coming back into year two of our five-year contract. So that is one of the things I know I've been hearing a lot from the staff over the summer. So we're excited about that. Again, excited for a new start to the school year within leadership, some changes. So we're excited for them. Also, a couple of things, in case you haven't seen throughout email, but we had a couple of teachers receive some awards and recognition. One being Cory Lila, who's also actually, she received a Fulbright Teacher Exchange Award this year, as well as Patricia Soria for a Student Impact Recognition Award for her engagement with her students. And then Cory's also, Cory Lila has also submitted this summer for a NJDA Frederick of the Foundation for Excellence. So she's been working on that regarding person posing that she puts on her year. So that, just a couple of spotlights for teachers over the summer. So, and then I have my conference earlier this summer, I know some teachers have been working on my graduate classes, so we're excited about that. And we've got new staff coming in, so we're looking forward to a good 25, 26 school year. And that's it. And then here are any questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next is the principal report, Mr. John Calvin.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. See everybody again, making their way up here. Thank you, Ms. Sunda. I wanted to echo that for Cory and also Patricia. Very proud of our staff every day. When they walk the halls and in the trenches, work pretty hard, importantly, they recognize and acknowledge globally outside of our community's readiness as well. So again, kudos to Cory and Patricia for their hard work and our work pays off, as we all know. A couple things as we begin our school year. Thank you, as you walk around the building, you see, I say this every year, it doesn't get old, but when you see reflection off of the halls, there's always actually closely there, just finishing, touching touches on it. Our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, our grounds staff, our IT staff, our administrative assistants, our transportation department. Those of you that, you know, have been in education know that the doors don't close in June, they continue open. There's a lot of work that gets done in between the bookends of September and June. And without that work that gets done by all the staff and the security staff as well, we wouldn't be ready to go on September. So we're excited that we are ready to go, and we're looking forward to a really another year, a great year in September. I don't know if you saw, but the screen that's behind you has caught my eye because that's our senior walk of our class of 2025. So I'll try not to get out and start crying again, but it's really cool to see those individuals that are now on their way to mostly to college or career or to the military or other things, a new class coming in. Of all of our staff and parents, welcome back. Accommodation will be coming up in our mornings for those of you that are our parents, as well as for members looking for that, it'll be through Genesis, which is our main. Next is our communication. All preseason, we say, forms need to get filled out, completed, are all coming your way. We have transitioned almost to a full digital mailing with a very small actual hard carpet carpetment for a couple reasons. One is we find that paper is good, but it's a lot of paper. It's about 50 documents, and we look at all the stuff that gets sent out. So there's a kind of a small mailing that will go out on, and also reduces cost for mailing. We find that with Genesis being as effective that it has been now over the last several years, that it's very effective to get everything out. So you get a welcome back letter, but then you also get a digital mailing that will come out from Genesis as well for all of our parents and students. Master schedule is pretty much set. Thank you to Courtney Delaney, our guidance staff, our child study team, who, and also our academic supervisors, who work very hard behind the scenes with Mr. Campbell and I on a regular basis. Hardly that we're in August talking about the schedule, you know, kind of being finalized. We started the process early December, but we are ready to go and really happy because our focus always is to build a student center schedule. And oftentimes, that's a challenge, right? Because it's based on staff that you have, the rooms that you have, and the counselors that have been in and out, and casemates have been out this summer as well, making sure they have the final tweaks done to them. As Ms. Sunda said, we're very excited for a new school year, a lot of great things to look forward to. You know, education is so much different when you're looking at it from the bookend, right? And I know it's a lot out there about, you know, teachers and what they do, and the aspect of summertime, is there a time for refreshment, a time to be with family, a time to recharge? Because it is absolutely a challenge in education. It is no better gift, though, to be a teacher and educator. So we're blessed to be able to have our staff come back. We have a few new staffers coming back, we're excited to see them next week for our new staff orientation and our sub-orientation as well. We're still looking forward to working with Ms. Sunda and the rest of the lovely teachers to focus on our students and do the best that we can for them every single day. I can stand here and say that, that's what our staff does every single day. Sometimes it fails, sometimes it falls short, but every single day, we're trying to be the best for students that are in front of us in our classrooms, or there's eight hundred in front of us, so it'll be a good day. A couple key dates, freshman orientation, we can do a half-day orientation, that's really stage four of our transition program, but now we've been looking four times as incoming ninth graders, and now they're professional ninth graders. So that transition is a half-day, where they come in, they go through the schedule, they meet their teachers, they're with their peer leaders throughout the time period, and they get a chance to be comfortable. We also had some open campus tours this week for students that could become really popular. Kudos to our guidance department for pushing John and say, hey, can we get a couple days before we get to orientation to just give them like, yeah, I realize that's necessary, absolutely aren't saying it is. Our parents that come in, I saw about 25 of them on Monday, walking around with our peer leaders, it's a breath of fresh air for them to come and say, okay, I feel a little better about what I think. It's a big building, it's a big campus, right? So we'll also have a ninth grade day for them next week, as well as a transfer student day. So the day when individuals can come in with their parent and their guardians and walk around and get comfortable with the peer leader, which again is, we're looking forward to that next week. Our first full day is the fourth for all students. Ninth grade parent night is September 11th, back-to-school night is September 18th. Ninth grade parent night is really just a special night for ninth grade parents only, with administrative staff and some counseling staff. That starts at seven o'clock on 11th and 18th, back-to-school night. We had it set up a little bit earlier, 6:45 is our start, trying to get parents out before 9:30 is our goal on the other end. For those again that have walked that walk as parents, right, or either as an educator or as a parent, you know, it can be a long night, but it's also a really important night. So we're looking forward to that. And behind me here, as I transition to athletic reports that we've been mission done, Mr. Dexter keeping a report here, and first and foremost, fall season has begun. Campus is full. Tennis and football started last week, so that was kind of our stepping into it. All fall sports started on Monday. So all of a sudden, we had a buzz, we have, you know, some detours to work around, that's okay, figure it out. But it's great to see the building alive again, you know? And as you look at the picture of the students behind you, and as you walk around and see students here for drop, right? That's what makes High Point High Point, right? The building is a building, it's the staff and community members and students that really bridge the life. So having those kids come back, even though some are regressing late at eight o'clock in the morning on Monday, and they come up for practice, it's really great to see. So fall sports are 100% a go, and that's a great thing. A couple of things I just want to highlight for fall sports is, our first course is football game, because of all the schedule changes the state does every school year, is actually August 30th, which is before the season again, against our favorite rivals, the Jefferson Falcons, if you may know that, yes? So that's on the 30th. And then we have a special night, I was going to highlight up here, because we'll be September board meeting, we'll cast it back, September 12th, we're going to do Mr. Dexter's work and first responder night. Actually, Jefferson was the place of Mr. Dexter on that rap, I think, last year, and we stood there together, instance, we both sat next to each other, we want to do this at High Point. So kudos to Mr. Dexter, again, one of our awesome administrative leaders, he's got that off the ground for honoring all of our first responders in military, which is on the 12th at a football game on that night. And then also, it's back, T-Mobile has reinvented and redefined their marketing from last year. So T-Mobile, if you see like, there's a lot of posts about T-Mobile, yes, we are trying to get them to seek to partner with us. We like to have funds that are available for us to be able to utilize to improve our facilities. As you know, as you work so hard on fiscal responsibility as a board member, the budget, it's nice to have some availability and maybe some extra funds. So T-Mobile is partnering with all schools, they're doing their social media contests again, so Mr. Dexter is heading that up. So follow on Instagram and Twitter, and you'll see a lot of posts coming out for that. And they're, you know, asking that a banner be held, this is no problem, but a football field will make continuous announcements to try to get them recognized. It's a deal partnership, right? They want customers, and we want to build partnerships for facilities. So, and segueing over here to our division champs, again, we had some of that were division champs, baseball was one of them, spent a lot of time with the baseball team, as many of you know, these are, this is our fourth straight year of, and Jack, pretty division champs, we're excited about that, as we can see the four P. This group here of This group here of students, players, and parents in the Booster Club for so many years that have worked on a project to bring fruition for the baseball clubhouse. I'm excited to say that that is in and the wall is built and it's being filled up for storage as we speak, today, tonight, but this morning it was. And that will be a shared sports space, baseball and also field hockey in the underneath and the above, upper deck area of that is actually the clubhouse where they're going to be able to do live announcing staff and students. So really looking at one of the areas we want to branch into is more broadcast journalism, working with our media program and also our current staff that we have, because there's definitely an interest in there for students wanting to part in that. So just want to say thank you to our Booster Club, that's the baseball assault, Booster Club, they've raised a lot of funds, tremendous amount of funds to get this project in place, thousand dollars to improve our facilities, so we're very excited about that part of it. Also, thank you to our community members that helped out and volunteered in time, while Jessica was one of them. Jessica was very helpful as a grounds person, just kind of gave us some insight. There's a lot of parents that are involved with concrete and groundwork and just making sure that you had hands on deck. So when it comes to community project, that's what it's all about, but we're just very thankful for them and the funds that they took, raised to improve our facilities. So I think, Mr. Campbell, do I get this thing?
Yep. I can say.
So this is the actual shed, just got placed today. Don't ask us how we got in there, we got in there on skates. It was amazing, the machine that lives in there, as you can see, it started up in the picture, but there's actually a wall that we put in place, heavy block that we helped lay and get in place behind it, which we're looking to add on to improve. But there's about two feet of space between the wall and the backstop, which is what we wanted for ladder space, we needed it, but also the small space. And yes, they had a little machine that got that, moved out of our parking lot, yes, in that area. And the dog was even, and Jesse is even, there's a few coming to be, like you got two inches under, you got an inch under, no problem, it was slow steady, and they got it. So the upper part has the windows, the doors are facing the backstop where they're able to watch the game live and broadcast. It has doors on both sides of it as well. Is that the entry? Sure, the entry?
Yeah, exit, I think. Going backwards. One more. Exit, enter, again. There you go.
So this is a timeline of the actual event today. Thankfully, you can't see us in the shadows supervising and covering my eyes a couple times, making sure we had space. That was the, you know, the time period of to get it in place and set, which was a miracle constructed from the whole side. As we said, that came on from the parking lot. And it goes to the little thing, that's the view from above, which the whole hillside is now cleaned up. They have steps on both sides, access, except for both sides of the dugout, to be able to access that versus what we had there before.
And those, and those wind, go back when those, those black tarp's come down, right? So then the broadcasters can see the.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to look, those, those actually, the wind guards, just the black tarp's, two bells will come down right in front of the, so they'll broadcast right out after a safe. You don't stay at the site, it makes all the vision came in, the bells are on the other side, the pressure on the other side of the wall. And that gives us an easy access, and now also have more access on this side that way to field hockey and it goes on from the side, and then easy access to it. So thank you again to the Booster Club and all the community members that were part of that, I really appreciate it. What's that? The dog had a little fiddly look, yes. The freshness of that.
We didn't notice that before that was there, yeah.
I did notice it, but it's added. Any question, those articles?
I just wanted to say that if it was not for participation of Mr. Calhoun and his presence and his knowledge in this area and his advocacy, it would not have happened. This is a major project that required limited funding from the board, and your participation and your overseeing project was instrumental in moving forward, so thank you.
Anything else to put to the people or anything? Anything else to ask about any? Thank you, everybody. Play ball.
Play ball.
They have ball coming up soon.
Next, we have Mr. Seamus Campbell, updating us on curriculum, instruction, and Q-SAC.
Good evening. First, I need to admit that tonight are our district goals for next year. Very quickly, it's important to note that our first goal is really the same as our first goal last year, because we're not looking to do a one and done, we're a lot. Making sure that our strong school culture is stronger, that our students and our staff every day come in, they feel supported, they feel positive, they feel energized, is an area that we're not satisfied with. We want to work more on professional development, instructional practices, restorative practices to make sure our climate is even stronger this year. Our second, I consider this perhaps the third winning of tech revolution on the internet. I was teaching there before the internet, but going online, pretty much, I think, I actually dig myself there. But essentially, having open resource, everything online was transformative, as was this phase of digital revolution, I think, or the third phase in a sense. This is a holistic goal. This is not jump on this technology as soon as possible and do the best and greatest new tool. This is to the 21st century citizens, where we think about safety, we think about ethics, we think about reducing and becoming more productive, but in the context of what is right, what is safe, what is fair, as we embrace this new technology. So those are our two district goals. This could be the last time you hear me speak about Q-SAC for some time, so I'm sure you'll be safer than it. We have been working on this audit for over two years. It is exhaustive and thorough, and last month we received a letter for training that said we have passed Q-SAC. So we're very proud of the fact that we are highly effective in all areas, and we are one of only a handful of school districts in the county who have earned this recognition. It's extremely difficult to pass Q-SAC, and a few have, and we're now alone that few. Just a couple of things to remind you about what this was. It's a three-year process. The audit looked at data from three years ago, right, or I guess two years ago, if you think of this past school year, two years prior to that. Then a year ago, they came and did the audit. This past year, we worked on our improvement plan, and this coming school year will actually be the basis for the next cycle of the audit. So essentially, never ends. However, a quick look here, there are five areas. Districts must score 80 points or 80% or better in all five. The one that is the most difficult is high and pity. All districts lose points, a considerable amount of points, because no one gets 100% of their students to pass every assessment. So that's the area that's tricky. Of the 100 in high and pity, we graded that to 60 and 40. The 40 points for compliance, as we work for every aspect of the audit, 100% perfect, A+, very proud of how hard everyone in the, in the office works to make sure that we are on top of all of our requirements. But of the 60 points, you'll see their test scores, product absenteeism, and graduation rate, you have to earn at least 40 out of the 60. So we were audited, we came in 34.4, 5.1 points shy, and that was based on 22, 23. So we went to work, and in 23, 24, we improved, 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 improved. Very proud of that success. Still not good enough, that got us to 37.6. But now, after this past year, we're at 39.7, ground up, we've got our 40, and we have successfully passed Q-SAC, which is, which is nice, it's nice to be able to say, that we went through a rigorous audit that was exhaustive, and we ended up being highly effective in every area. It is important to note, it is not just our success and our improved performance, it was an adjustment to the rubric. We didn't make a point of this because you take the rules you're given and you work with them. However, if you look at this, the prior rubric said that K to eight and nine to 12 districts, 50% of the performance component was assessment results, whereas for K to 12 districts, it was only 33%. So it's particularly more difficult for K to eight and nine to 12 districts to pass them. The new revised rubric is a bit more equitable, it drops it to 42%, which helps by putting the points in some other areas where we excel. One of those areas, so let's see if we can assist. Also, want to thank the board, Mr. Dunn, who was on our committee, the board office, Mrs. Hoffman, Miss Briggs, the staff, the students, it's their performance that got us over here, and our staff. So we want to thank them for their support and participation. One of the areas we've been measured as a key component is chronic absenteeism. If a student misses 10% of the school year, and they, there are only a very few number of excused absences from a state standpoint, bring your child to work day, that earns day, that it could be a draft, or perhaps, I don't know, it's very minimal, okay? Essentially, every absence counts. And if you're happy two times you are chronically absent, now, if 10% of your students are chronically absent, you have to go through an action plan. So I want to be intended tonight is the reauthorization of our action plan, which we'll see in a moment clearly has proven effective. Our guidance team, led by Mrs. Delaney in particular, our main office staff, Mr. Calhoun, Emma, Mrs. Sarno, and several teachers work, they don't always dress in matching outfits, but they're, they're, work very, very hard to target and identify adverse students and then support them. So here's chronic absenteeism, it's a huge issue in New Jersey right now, coming out of COVID, over 20%, down below 15%, and really trending in an outstanding direction. This afternoon, I went and looked this up, I think this is even more telling. Not only are we improving chronic absenteeism, but there are eight high schools in the county that have nine to 12, and we're right here at the top. Some districts have as high as 25 to 31% chronically absent. So 14.7 is not good enough, but it's relatively strong, and we measure ourselves against our peers, from type to type, so we're really pleased with that. Any questions on Q-SAC or chronic absenteeism with Mr. Cole? I will be the third person to mention that we have a wonderful, outstanding educator. 62 Fulbright recipients have gone on to win Nobel prizes, and we're excited to display like one day for them. For the meantime, she'll be participating in a really prestigious exchange program. She will not know until the summer or part of the world she goes to teach. It'll be about a two or three week commitment, and throughout the year, she'll be working with her Fulbright cohort in the next 40 days. Two of our board members, Ms. Diaz and Mr. Dunn, took up Miss Lila's invitation this summer. She sponsored a domestic exchange program where students from around the country did a week, was it? Did a one-week visit, and she organized the entire program, had all the hosts at her house for celebratory reflection, and it was really, it's the kind of thing that she does, so we're really thrilled with her. And we're thrilled two weeks from today, New Jersey's level one staff comes back, vehicles off the 180 days of previous. So we're, a lot of summer left, but we're getting ready, so.
Thank you.
Okay, back to business. Other business, just noting, two events, new teacher orientation will be held August 27, 28, at 3:00 PM. And substitute orientation on August 27, 10 AM to 1:30 PM. And then under other business, we have a resolution on our board goals. The resolved, the Board of Education approves the following district goals for the 2025, 2026 school year. They were as Mr. Campbell presented, but I'll read them. One, continue to focus on improving school climate so as to foster overall wellness for both students and staff. Student and staff well-being will be supported through an increased focus on managing student behavior, expanding our use of intervention strategies, expanding classroom practices focused on student engagement and targeted instruction, and providing staff with professional development to support active risk students. And number two is an increase to the degree to which students and staff understand the growing capacity of artificial intelligence, AI, leading our school community to leverage this technology in an effective and responsible manner. So I'll make that motion to accept that resolution and have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or discussion on our district goals? Brooke.
Ms. Calsec?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Moving on to action items, curriculum, instruction, and technology.
Okay. So items one, two, and three, we have the faculty attendance rate for June, student attendance rate for June, and a suspension report for June with attachments on the action items on that. Number four, we also have the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report from June 25 through August 19th. There's no attachment for that, so just making note of that. I'd like to move, we have a lot of items tonight, I'd like to move five through, I think, move five through 25 together. Number five, it's our field trips that are listed in the attachment A5. Number six, professional development activities with an attachment. Number seven, educer online as a virtual provider for 25, 26 school year. Number eight, the Danielson framework for teaching as the evaluation instrument for teachers or other certificate staff, the Marshall Principal rubric as the evaluation instrument for administrators, and the NJDOE Highly Effective Reflective Practice Protocol for select staff. Number nine, we have choice students listed with IDs there for 25, 26. Number 10, we have the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, Career Readiness, Mic Literacies, and Key Skills. We have a couple lists there of the different assessments. Number 11 are the district professional development plans and the new teacher mentoring plan for 25, 26 school year. Number 12 is the, the use of the Rubicon Atlas Curriculum Maps, which is in alignment with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and other guidelines. Number 13 is the staff handbook for 25, 26. Number 14 is the student handbook for 25, 26. Number 15 is the submission of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, Consolidated Individuals with Disabilities Act, and the Carl D. Perkins Career Tech Grant for fiscal year 26, in the following amounts of grant funding awards, incumbent upon their submissions and their approval, their applications. Number 16 is the Anti-Discrimination, Anti-Harassment Handbook, Affirmative Action for 25, 26, and there is a link. Number 17 are the curriculum materials, textbooks, and arts titles list with a link as well. Number 18, the, to approve the ongoing concurrent enrollment relationship with the following institutions for 25, 26. Number 19, approving joining a consortium of Sussex County Schools headed by the Matt Gump Borough School District to pursue Title III funding through the ESDA grants and to accept the grant awards upon subsequent approval. Number 20 is the Special Educational Work-based Learning Program with some work sites listed there. Number 21, it's the approval of the Emergency Virtual Remote Instruction Program checklists. We're not planning on doing that, but we have to have it for 25, 26. Number 22, additional summer workshop days of the staff members who have participated in that as listed. And 23 is the assessment schedule for 25, 26. Number 24, our Chronic Absenteeism Corrective Action Plan for this school year. And 25 is approving us to utilize in-site help, which is a mental health and wellness program, which provides a lot of support for our students. It's listed there on number 25. So making motions, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Calsec?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. I'll move items one through 16 under personnel, and one is recommendation to approve the appointment of Seamus Campbell.
approve the appointment of Seamus Campbell as the permanent action officer for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Item two is a recommendation approved by Brian Benzimer as our Title II ADA Coordinator for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Item three is a recommendation to approve the following administrators to cover Saturday detention as needed and as listed. Item four is a recommendation to accept the resignation notification from Denise Nichols, paraprofessional aide effective July second, twenty-twenty-five. Item five is a recommendation to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five staffing and salaries as listed in attachment B one. Item six is a recommendation to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six staffing and salaries as listed in attachment B two. Item seven is a recommendation to approve substitutes for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year as listed in attachment three.
Thank you.
Item eight is a recommendation to approve use of all shifts and health source group, temporary staffing agencies within a pool of credentialed school nurses in the event a substitute school nurse is needed and cannot be secured during the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Item nine is a recommendation to approve the use of Swing Education Inc., which provides substitute teachers in the event one cannot be secured for the upcoming school year. Item ten is a recommendation to approve the following mentors for provisional teachers as listed for the upcoming school year. Item eleven is a recommendation to approve the following six-period assignments. They are as listed. Item twelve is a recommendation to approve the following bus aides, substitute bus aides to provide assistance during the upcoming school year. Listed. Item eleven is a recommendation to approve the following individuals as home instructors and or tutors for the upcoming school year, and they are as listed. Item fourteen is a recommendation to approve the following individuals as paraprofessional aides for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, and they are listed in the table. Item five is a recommendation to approve Daniel Burke as a student teacher from William Patterson University, with clinical two practice experience effective September second, twenty-twenty-five, through the end of the first semester. Item sixteen is a recommendation to approve, in accordance with terms of the H B E A agreement, the following individual to advance on diet, and that is as listed, and that is all sixteen. So I will make that motion for one through sixteen. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments on any of those?
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Palsec?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Anybody want extra curriculum? I'll go ahead and move four items under extracurricular. One is a recommendation to approve the revised twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five extracurricular contracts as listed in attachment C one. Item two is a recommendation to approve the new and revised twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six extracurricular appointments as listed in attachment C two. Item three is a recommendation to accept the resignation notification from James Sek, boys' head soccer coach, effective immediately. And item four is a recommendation to approve Thomas Edge, head boys' soccer coach for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year as listed. So I'll make that motion. Can I have a second? Any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Palsec?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
We do have one item under policy. Move that item, I'll break a recommendation, but it is a recommendation to approve, to abolish the following policy and regulation as they are outdated, no longer supported by statute, and that is policy sixteen forty-eight dot one five, record keeping for healthcare statistics, and Regulation fifty-five thirty-one alcohol substance abuse for athletics. So I'll make that motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any special comments?
Ms. Palsec?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
And let's see, there are eleven items under finance, we're going to skip right past negotiations and buildings and grounds where we have no action items. Finance, I'd like to move items one through eleven together. One is a recommendation to accept a report of the board secretary, business administrator for a month of June twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five. Item two is a recommendation to accept a report of the treasurer for the month of June twenty twenty-five. And three is a recommendation to approve the board transfers, a minimum expense transfer report for June twenty twenty-five. And four is a recommendation to approve payment, the attached schedule of funded bills dated June thirtieth, July thirty-first, and August nineteenth of twenty twenty-five. Item five is a recommendation to accept the adult education agency account, athletic account, cafeteria account, construction account, principal's petty cash account, scholarship account, school store, and student activities reconciliations for June twenty twenty-five. Item six is a recommendation to approve the following substitute pay schedule effective September first this year for the upcoming school year, and they are as listed. Item seven is a recommendation that the board approve the comprehensive maintenance plan and F one for the upcoming, for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. And item eight is a recommendation the board approves a revised long-range facilities plan for twenty-twenty-five through twenty-thirty, that to include the paving of the school pension suite, which is going on as we speak. Item nine is a recommendation to approve the discontinued use of the equipment or vehicle listed below, identified, but will be discarded and or sold as appropriate. They are as listed. And P is a recommendation to accept a donation of various woodworking equipment and hand tools for the total value of thirty-five hundred dollars to our STEM department from Mrs. Betsy Fallon. Item eleven is a recommendation the board approves and authorizes the execution of the following tuition contracts between High Point Regional High School as a setting district and the following districts, related information, and they are as listed on the next couple of pages. So I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion? I'd like to thank Mrs. Betsy Fallon once again for generous donation of equipment to our STEM department. Did I miss anybody? Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Palsec?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Palsec, you want to handle transportation? Okay, are you, well.
Okay, okay.
Who was on the last seat? I was not.
Tom was.
Oh, okay.
Tom was.
Bring us home.
I'm the giving, I'm the giving person.
So we have thirteen items to move. We're going to clock. First one is a bid, the second one, number two is, the board approves urgent care for alcohol drug testing, same clock here. Item three is correct the contract for transportation. Number four is another correct the contract for transportation. And six, number five. And number six is joint transportation agreement. Number seven is another joint transportation, as these, I think. Number eight is renewal of contracts, as listed, all these are as listed. Number nine is the renewed contract as listed. Number ten is a joint transportation agreement as listed. And number eleven is a renewal contract for transportation. Twelve is contracts for transportation as listed, the page is there. And then thirteen is renewal contracts for students for the twenty-six school year, and that's the bottom page. Is that all of them? I'll move it. What's that?
Excellent.
See, did I do what you like, Joe?
Beautifully.
There you go. So move, can I have a second?
Second.
There you go. Does anybody have any questions or comments on those items? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
I need to abstain for four and five, and yes for the rest.
Ms. Palsec?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, so these are action items, no correspondence, no miscellaneous. Second public comment section of the evening, please state your name and address, same rules apply. Anyone in the room or online? Seeing none, may I motion to close public comments?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any noncommittee board member reports your comments? They have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?